Thank you everyone for being here for our Board of Trustees meeting on December 11th. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Try to go slower than the deer.
Right, we just.
So first we have public comment, so if anybody would like to come on up to the podium? Anybody who might be a Boy Scout too? I got some insider trading that I pull there.
Good evening, I'm Jim Tasson, 268 Marlboro. I'm here to represent, I'm on behalf of our association, the Highlands, South Highlands, let's see, I always forget the name.
South Bloomfield Highlands.
South Bloomfield Highlands, it's a mouthful. I'd just like to say I appreciate, we do appreciate moving forward with the petition. We've turned it in and hopefully we keep moving as it is. We are in dire need of water situations, so we do appreciate it though, thank you.
Anyone else? Do you get extra credit if you speak? You get the box, right? Check the box.
My name is Mark Intocley, I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. My public comment is in regards to the meeting minutes. During the last Township Trustee meeting, it was stated that there were no required contributions to the Retirement Healthcare Fund while on the website and on the Milliman Actuary reports, it says the Township contributes 1.25 million in excess of benefit payments in accordance with the funding policy of the Township. I hope these changes are made and reflected in the minutes. Also, as highlighted previously, I believe our Police Department and our Fire Department under Public Safety was treated unfairly during the split of assets. On April 26, there was an investment report which is consistent with an April 27, 2021 report from Milliman, and those asset valuations were considerably different than the April 2020 numbers used in the August 28 report of this year. With the $500,000 of additional contributions being made to the Retirement Healthcare Fund, I believe the general fund should contribute 100% of that amount to help rectify the inequities of what was done to our public safety retirees. The investment growth in the fund over approximately 15 month period was denied to those retirees, and that should be fixed and rectified. Regarding the FLOC item on the agenda, I believe it's a violation of our Fourth Amendment rights to videotape our vehicles and our license plate numbers without any reason. And after experiencing that in foreign countries and learning how photos of the vehicles, including individuals in the vehicles, were used against residents, I think that shows how deep government can go into hurting people and damaging them when they collect data that doesn't help and data that is inconsistent with any wrong action by a resident of our community. So I'm asking and encouraging you to vote no, and it's up to you to vote no and protect us from overreach from the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Anybody else want public comment?
Hi, David Thomas, first off to Neil and Jan and to Michael. Happy Hanukkah. I hope it's a blessed and peaceful time for you for the rest. Merry Christmas, because I think this is the last time you guys are meeting before Christmas. I'm here to ask for a public safety issue. There was another pretty bad vehicle damage type accident, but not personal, thank God. No, didn't look like anybody seriously injured, at Hickory Grove in Franklin. And since the high school opened up there and they put all the combined high schools at the new location, in the mornings, in between 3:00 and 5:00, that place is a drag strip, Franklin. It's a straight shot from all the way from Telegraph until you hit Long Lake. And people fly through there, and the visibility at that intersection is very poor because the intersection is at a crown, and both sides dip on either side. You've been to my house, you've seen that intersection. You can't see the oncoming car from the other direction if you're on Franklin and you want to turn left on either way going, want to go either way in Hickory Grove, whether you want to go to Telegraph or you want to go into the neighborhood. The cars literally disappear for almost a second coming from either direction because the hill's on a crown, and then it kind of goes to a valley just before you come up to the crown, so a car can literally disappear from there. There's stop signs on the Hickory Grove side, but for the Franklin, there's no stop signs. And I've gotten petitions before with the previous administration from the neighbors. All the neighbors would like to see a stop sign there. And, you know, how long before there's a serious injury accident? I've seen SUVs get rolled at that intersection and stuff, get T-boned and that, because you just don't see, there's no visibility. And coming from the Hickory Grove side, there's a post, a utility pole and shrubbery right there at the corner, so you cannot see the north side coming at you. It's just a dangerous intersection, it should have a four-way stop to prevent that. You know, there's near misses there two or three times a day. So before somebody gets seriously hurt, could we really go back and look at that, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Not, then I'll go ahead and close public comment. First we will come to approving the Board's Special Meeting Minutes of November 16, 2023. If I'll had a chance to look them over, unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. We also have approval of the Board's Special Meeting Minutes from November 20, 2023. Again, if there are no changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Shostak, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Next is approve the Board Minutes of November 27, 2023. Again, unless there's any changes, I'd look for.
I have a quick comment about that, though, just for clarity's sake. And I, you know, the minutes we have to have, Dirk can correct me if I'm wrong, we have to have, you know, the attendance, we have to have when it started, when it ended, and any actions that we took during the meeting. And all of those things, those are required, required items. We do put in a, you know, very quick summary of each item, but also then a link to the video, you know, a link to the packet, and a link to any presentations. And what my style has been, which was to avoid a rendition of who said what, when, why, and what to include, what not to include. And I had a perfectly good suggestion, but there could be a million other perfectly good suggestions about what to include, about any particular topic in the minutes themselves, which is why there's a link to the video, people can watch exactly what was said, by whom, with, you know, links to each agenda item. So, a very interesting point, I appreciate it, but, you know, we don't, we're not required to create a summary of everything that was said at the meeting, just the actions that were taken and who voted for it, against it.
But at the same time, we shouldn't put anything incorrect.
True.
Right? And as it relates to the point brought up earlier, the minutes as prepared are correct. We are required under state law to make a contribution annually to our pension. We are not required by state law to make a contribution anywhere else.
You just have to be at 40% by a certain date, and we choose to put in extra.
Well, and when there is an occasional issue where the minutes are not exactly correct, we email.
We all do look at it.
We all read it and we email, and Tom knows me well because I'm a proofreader, and those corrections are usually made before we get to the meeting, which is why I don't bring them up at the meeting, because again, as long as they're correct by the meeting time, they're correct. And I think the video links are awesome, because then you really see who said what if you really want to know about a particular issue. So, thank you, Martin.
Great, thanks.
And the passion coming from an HOA president is always a lot better to hear than our rendition on paper, so. And he's been through a lot to get this passed, though. All right, so again, unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Murray, support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. So next we have the proclamation honoring Bob Taylor for his years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA. We have Director Patty Volker here from our Planning, Building and Ordinance. Do you want Bob to come up with you?
I think that'd be nice.
You knew that was coming!
Sir. So Bob, on behalf of the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning, Building and Ordinance Department, we would like to honor you for your 19 years of service with Bloomfield Township volunteer service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. You first started as an alternate in 2004, then the Township Board appointed you as a regular board member starting in 2005. And then your ZBA fellow members found that your leadership led to appointing you as a vice chair in 2009 for two consecutive years, and in 2011, you were voted chair, a position you held through to the end of 2013. So undoubtedly, you're going to be greatly missed by all of us and our board members. We actually have two board members attending tonight. We have Brian Henry, our Chair of the ZBA, and we have Jocelyn Giogrande, our Vice Chair of the ZBA. But I also received some comments from your other fellow members, and I want to share these with you. So Steffi Vaqui states, "I'd like to thank Bob for his decades of service to Bloomfield Township community and for being an example of what public service is. I'd also like to thank Bob for being a great source of knowledge for the ZBA and for acting as a mentor to our board. We will miss you at our meetings, Bob, and your many generous moments of levity. All the best." And then also I got a comment from Scott Gitelman. "Bob, it's been a privilege to work alongside someone with your wealth of experience and passion for the Bloomfield community. You have a wealth of experience, and somehow you seem to know about every property in the township. Your passion for doing the right thing for the applicants and the township is consistent and inspiration to all. I will miss the insightful perspectives that you brought to every meeting, and I'm confident that your influence will continue to resonate. I wish you the best in the next chapter. Best regards." So with that, we have a proclamation that the Township Board of Trustees, Marsees specifically, would like to present to you, and if I could, read it to you. "The Charter Township of Bloomfield, Oakland County, Michigan. Proclamation in honor of Robert 'Bob' Taylor. Whereas the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees adopts this resolution to honor Bob Taylor for his 19 years of service, devoted service to the enhancement of our community while serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Whereas the ZBA is responsible for rendering decisions on appeals from the strict application of the zoning ordinance, Bob displayed professionalism, empathy, and discretion in dealing with delicate property matters with that directly impacted residents and contributed to preserving the character of our beloved community. And whereas the members of the ZBA repeatedly select Bob to be Chair of the ZBA, a position that is charged with presiding over the meeting and supervising the conduct of the ZBA's proceedings, and whereas we reluctantly accept Bob's resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, but do so with the utmost respect and admiration for his personal dedication to making Bloomfield Township a premier community. Now therefore be resolved that members of the Board of Trustees and the residents of Bloomfield Township honor Bob Taylor for his 19 years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Yet known to all reading this proclamation that it was adopted by the Township Board of Trustees on December 11, 2023 and included in the minutes as a permanent record. Signed by Martin C. Brook, Bloomfield Township Clerk."
Thank you very much.
Can you hold it up?
I didn't sign up to get this, I signed up to serve what I think's a wonderful community. I was a Realtor for 40 years, I still continue to work in a similar capacity, but in a different community. This community is one of the best in Southeast Michigan, and I've worked at a lot of them. Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure and a privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And thank you for showing your support, too. This is a great team, so thank you. So next we have considering approval of appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Commission, Construction Code Board of Appeals, Electrical Examining and Appeals Board, and International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals.
And Patty? So this evening, we are asking the Board to consider, in many cases, reappointments. And if I could, I'll just briefly highlight the memo that's before you and go through each of the boards. The Zoning Board of Appeals, that's a three-year term, and at this point, we're looking at a consideration of reappointment of Brian Henry. There also is, with the resignation of Bob Taylor, there is a vacancy of a regular position, a regular member. And I noted that Carol Rosati, who is currently an alternate, has expressed an interest to be a regular member. And so should the Board entertain such a request, then that would then result in her alternate position to be vacant, and thereby the Board would be seeking to select a member of our community to be on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is the first action. Do you want to take it board by board or in group?
Once, or do we have to do them individually?
Separately.
Okay. So do we have any questions first about that? Again, I personally was on the ZBA when Carol was there, and she was Chair, she was amazing. We were sad to see her take a step back, but glad she's coming back.
Carol offers so much for the community, and she has a great presence on the Board.
So with that, I'd like to look for a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett?
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. So next.
So moving on to the Planning Commission, that's also a three-year term, and we're looking to seek a reappointment for John Kelly and Andrew O'Donnell. Andrew O'Donnell actually is a representative from the Planning Commission to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so she has a dual role, but in this particular position, it's strictly the Planning Commission that she's seeking to be reappointed for a three-year term.
And any questions?
No, and they both really, they add so much to the Planning Commission, they're both great members, and be happy to make that motion.
Great. Motion by trustee Barnett? Support. Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
So the Construction Board of Appeals is a Board that only meets when we receive an application. And principally, it's looked as a review body for somebody who wants a relief from the strict enforcement of the state construction codes. I can tell you that over the 20-some years that I've been here, we've only had two applications. So that certainly is a credit to the Township in that regard, and so we do have two reappointments that we're asking you to consider. Scott Gitelman, Gitelman Construction, and Jim Rowell of Livingston County Building Official. Those are two-year terms.
There's no questions?
Do those have to be Township Presidents?
No, they do not.
One is.
Right out of that.
Is there any other questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Support. Motion.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Now, support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. And in similar fashion, the Electrical Examining and Appeals Board, a review, a Board, is a two-year term as well. The same applies, but more specifically directed to getting relief from the electrical codes of the state of Michigan. This also is a request to, for reappointment. We have Michael Mooney, who's a master electrician, we have Mark Sentner, who's a DTE Energy Company representative, and then Ross Chapman, who's our own Bloomfield Township Electrical Inspector, and those are reappointments.
Any questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Try this again, motion.
I have one question real quick. Patty, much like the construction code one, has this had many requests over the years? Are pretty uncommon?
They have not had a request for the 21 years I've been here.
Oh, interesting, thank you.
For that time, I'm not sure.
Not much fun being on that Board then, is it?
Yeah.
You never get to meet.
No wonder they want to be reappointed, there's nothing to do. It looks really good on their resume, but.
Motion by trustee Kalinsky. Support. Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the next one.
All right, the last one. The International Property Maintenance Code, Board of Appeals, this is a two-year term. These two also are a reappointments, and you'll note that the same individuals, Scott Gitelman of Gitelman Construction and Jim Rowell of Livingston County Building Official, it's actually specific within our code that the International Property Maintenance Code, Board of Appeals will be the same Board as the Construction Board of Appeals. So that's why you see that redundancy. And in this instance, over the last 20 years, we've seen only four applications. So again, it's as, as an application is sought, then we will call the Board.
Any questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Murray?
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and post for the alternate position for the ZBA.
Yes, yes. Shortly.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next we have considering appointment to the Financial Sustainability Committee, presented by Michael Shostak, Township Treasurer.
Thank you. Okay, as I put in your memo in the packet, the FSC, the Financial Sustainability Committee, was created by resolution of the Board in January of 2015. Note, it is not statutory like the ZBA or Planning Commission, this is a discretionary Board that was created. The charter or direction of the Board was set by, of the FSC, the Financial Sustainability Committee, was set by the Board of Trustees in 2015 to act as a recommending body to the Board of Trustees without decision-making authority, so we reserve fiduciary responsibility to the members of the Board of Trustees, as we are fiduciaries. Recommendations of the Committee shall be advisory in nature on topics involving best practices in the financial sustainability of Bloomfield Township. The resolution that created it also sets forth the membership. The standing members of the Committee are the Township Treasurer, myself, Township Supervisor, Danny Walsh, an at-large member of the Board of Trustees, which is currently trustee Neil Barnett, the Township Finance Director, who is Jason Tice, and then three members of the public. And the resolution says that the members of the public must meet these requirements. One, that they have resided in the Township for a minimum of 30 days, they're U.S. citizens, and Township electors of at least 18 years of age, which I assume they would all be 18 years of age if they're electors, meaning that they're voters. I did confirm with the Clerk's Office that all five applicants are in fact Township residents and voters. In addition, they should have at least 10 years of specific experience and expertise in public sector finances, which should include actuaries, attorneys, and investment advisors. I emphasize the word "should," it doesn't mean "shall," right? There's a legal distinction between "should" and "shall," right? Okay. All right, so in the memo, you see the five applications that were received by my office by the deadline. I went through them all, I've shared them with you. I think the way that we should best approach this decision, basically, as I reviewed each application or each submission, I should call it, it wasn't really an application per se, out of the five, I think only two meet the requirements set forth in the resolution, that being 10 years of expertise and experience in public sector finances. And so I think the two that meet that are Peter or Pete Nagy, it's Nagy, right? I think it's Nagy, yeah. Pete Nagy, who is a financial advisor and has been a financial advisor seemingly his entire career, which spans roughly 25 years, okay? The other applicant that I think meets the criteria is Reyna Emmons, excuse me, she is a CPA and accountant. She currently works for a boutique CPA firm where she specializes in governmental auditing and accounting. And as you saw in her cover letter, she's been covering Oakland County, Washtenaw County, Western Wayne County, the Oakland County Treasurer's Office and the Michigan Department of Treasury with 30 years of practice. She serves on several Boards related to that. She helps clients not only with their audits and their accounting, but also their investment policies and how they invest. When I spoke with her, most of her clients are smaller municipalities, I'm not going to name them out of respect, but they are smaller to the point where they wouldn't be able to afford the kind of investment advisors and such that we have available to us. So those are the two that I think meet the criteria. The other ones, while certainly distinguished applications, I don't think meet the 10-year criteria that the Board set forth in 2015. So I would ask, I guess at this point, for anyone who, well, not a motion, but if there's any discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, discussion. If there's any discussion about either Ms. Emmons or Mr. Nagy. I did get a chance to speak with both of them. Board Chair David Petosky, who's one of the other residents, who is a public member of the FSC, got to speak with them as well and was duly impressed, and so I'm passing along his feedback that he was impressed with both and would be happy with either, so.
Any questions?
Is there any other questions or comments?
Quick questions. Is there, of the two that have the experience that we're looking for, is there one that rounds out the sort of the diversity of the Board with regard to the experience?
That's an excellent question. The current public members of the Board consist of David Petosky, who's our Chairman, he is a financial advisor, investment manager, similar to Mr. Nagy. David Olson is the other member, he has corporate finance background, I believe he worked for Chrysler, right? Dyller, okay, Dyller Chrysler. He has a strong corporate background, and then the third, of course, was Chris, who, when we pointed to the Board, created the vacancy, so.
So the accounting background might be nice to add to the team.
I'm in agreement. I thought that Reyna Emmons' background as a CPA, but also working with municipalities, offers a great, you know, another perspective to things that's currently not on the Board and on the Committee, and I think that would just be a nice perspective, it would be a strong contribution to what the charge of the Committee is.
I'm in agreement. All I can add is that until right now, I didn't know that you had already, to what extent you had interviewed them, vetted them, checked out all the backgrounds. Just going through it on my own, my top candidate was the same, that the CPA background was very relevant for the position.
And I appreciate that you included everybody and gave it a chance to all resumes, because I will say there are some that are super passionate, but without having any actual experience, that was what I was looking for, as well as either no jobs listed or anything like that, that makes it hard to pick. So that helped narrow it down to three, and then of those three, Reyna and Peter were my top. I like that you've been looking for that unicorn, somebody who actually does the accounting and knows investments, which I think you've pointed out to me, is if you're away, they need to do both, and we used to always have one or the other.
Well, if only I could get her to be my deputy.
I know, I asked him about that, too.
I think that would be a massive pay cut for her.
Yeah. But those are my two as well, and I think that either one would be a great choice.
I'd love to speak to this. So I actually agree in a lot of the stuff we're saying in terms of diversity of thought. I was a diversity of thought candidate on that, where I had different experiences, including my accounting and data analytics background, as well as my treasury background in the union sector. So I brought a different mindset compared to Mr. Petosky as well as Mr. Roliski, right?
Olson.
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 Okay.
Everybody's turning to Kalinsky.
No, so, and again, each one of those candidates think differently, and that's what makes the Board so great, right? They can provide feedback to the Treasurer and our Board on the best way to invest that money, right? We want to be good fiduciaries with the money that was given to us through that bond. We want to be good fiduciaries with the money that was given to us through that bond and the money that we keep putting in from the board. When I look at candidates, she has a lot of that background and that experience that makes it great, right? Diversity in thought. But I also look at, we hire experts in terms of, you know, Green and Amco to do, to give us the best advice possible. And having a financial advisor similar to Mr. Nagy, who has $200 million in his portfolio and represents those people and has seen the up and downs in the market, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for somebody who has that breadth. And again, Ms. Emmons has that, right?
Emmons.
Emmons. I'm not good with names today. So the fact that she has that experience is amazing. It's just Mr. Nagy has more of that focus. So again, when we're looking at diverse of the team, I believe she can be a good diverse candidate in terms of her experiences. I also look for not only diversity in thought, diversity in experiences, I believe Mr. Nagy is also a military veteran, which is something that when we put kind of a value on that, that sets apart for a lot of people, and especially a lot of people in the finance world. You don't see a lot of people that, when they were 18 years old, you know, enlisted and did that. So that kind of always tugs at my heartstrings associated with my family and what's important to me. So I agree with whatever the board decides, and I pull more for Mr. Nagy than I do Ms. Emmons. I wish we could make two positions, to be quite honest, because I think they would bring a lot of experience and a lot of thought to the role.
No, I agree. Mr. Nagy offers a lot, and you never know in the future, at some point, he just might be an additional candidate if something else opens, so. But I understand what you're saying. But unless there's anything else, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other discussion? Just that I appreciate that she has a municipal background. I think that's a nice key feature as well.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we appoint Reyna Emmons as our next member of the Financial Sustainability Committee.
Support by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you for your deliberation.
Yep, yep. It's always easy when you have a lot of good candidates.
Yep, absolutely. So next, we have considering the approval of a resolution to accept the petition to create special assessment district SAD number 601 for the construction of the public water main for South Bloomfield Highlands and schedule the first public hearing of necessity for Monday, January 6. Cory, did you write this? All the Corys are usually this. No? And we have Jen Worth been here today from our assessing department.
So as Dana said, today, we're going to talk about South Bloomfield Highlands, their water main extension, SAD. We are bringing to you tonight the petition for creating a special assessment for their water main extension. I'll come over here. It might be easier. This is just a quick map of the subdivision itself. We'll talk about later. It's up in section three. We're looking at roughly 220 properties in this subdivision. South Bloomfield Highlands is inclusive of Barrington Road, Bedford Road, Devonshire Road, Hillsdale Road, Lancaster, Marlborough Drive, Mulberry Road, Rutherford Road, Somerset Road, and Traymore. It's going to consist of 14,450 feet of eight-inch diameter of a public water main. The project fully consists of a new eight-inch water main system that will be replaced in an existing private well system throughout the South Bloomfield Highlands subdivision. There will be a one-inch water tap off the new eight-inch line that will extend to a stop box at the property line of each lot. Three connections to the existing township water system will include Barrington Road, just east of Woodward, Rutherford Road, and Mulberry Road. The cost of abandoning the existing water source treatment and distribution system will also be included. And that does include the water main, the hydrants, and the gate wells. Petition has been confirmed by the township assessor. It's supported by 54.84% of the homeowners, which represents 58.04% of the total acreage. I can tell you, we were trying to get this pushed through as expedited as possible, so I did have more than this of petitioners of residents that had signed. We just got to that mark and we wanted to get this moving. So my guess is they're probably much closer to a 60% approval in a whole. We're estimating the project cost to be $8,534,323.56. Again, there's 220 lots in the subdivision. We are assessing 217. We have three pending combinations, two of which are owned by the homeowners association and one that is owned by a separate resident. Tentative assessment currently is $39,328.68 per parcel, receiving a full unit of benefit, and everybody is receiving a full unit of benefit. Today, we're asking you to accept this petition, approve the resolution to create SAD number 601, and we're looking to schedule our public hearing and necessity for January 8th of 2024.
Thank you for getting that through. And I know Jen Jen had a lot of work to do on this one because as you were doing all the hard work and getting signatures, we wanted to get this in on the December because, again, if you remember, this is the emergency area where we are prepared for if their wells fail, but if we can get ahead of it before that happens, this allows us to do the first public hearing in January. So thank you for rushing as fast as you can to get it past that 50% mark.
They definitely worked hard, the residents as a whole, Jim and Teresa, and I mean, they had a team and they got out there and they got it done. Like I said, I almost cringed at putting the lower percentage because I know they really truly are probably closer to 60, potentially above 60%. I've got probably about 15 to 20 signatures that was just going to take some extra work to verify. So I mean, they're definitely there.
Does anyone have any questions?
So, yeah, I have a question. In going through the proposal, I noticed that there were four lots noted as vacant that had zero assessment. And you noted two or three of those that were owned by residents or were owned by the subdivision. But having done a road petition before with some unbuildable or unbuilt lots in my own neighborhood, my question is, since they are not being assessed anything, they were assessing the unbuilt lots a small amount. And what one of the property owners did was have it deemed unbuildable. So there's, and they fought it, that went to zero, which means everybody else pays a little more. Except then after we paved the roads, then they came back and petitioned the township to make them buildable and in fact built million-dollar homes on them. So of any of these ones that are not being charged, in fairness to the residents that are paying, is there any one of those lots that could be, say, built on, and how would that be handled in the future?
So we have three. Those are the three combinations that are pending. So two of them, well, four lots are what the current well houses sit on. So there's two lots on either side of the neighborhood that are next to each other, so four lots total where the current wells stand. Those will be demolished and they have to be abandoned at the end of the project. So the subdivision has requested to combine those lots. And then there will be, or there is verbiage put into the deeds with the combination, that they cannot be split again. And that is the same situation with the resident that is also combining their two lots. They have a house on one and they have a vacant. They're doing a combination, and it is put into the deed that they cannot be split in the future.
So they wouldn't eventually be able to be built on and then?
Exactly.
Because then that, because that comes out of all the residents. So when you give somebody zero, there was some hard feelings when those lots got deemed buildable and in fact built on.
Right, right.
Thank you very much for that.
But they are deemed billable, buildable. I just want to make sure you knew there's two different.
The combined lot is buildable.
Yeah, it is buildable.
But the combined lot cannot be split in the future. In fact, I've reviewed the deed restrictions. So, so yes, where there's two lots that were combined, the combined lot can be built on, but you can't split it in the future to have two buildable lots.
So you can't put up like a whole, like a second residence on the same property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's what makes you knew that they would be buildable.
Well, it sounded like they would potentially, not like their water lots, or that was part of the issue in my sub, was that some of them had water issues and the buildability went back and forth on them. And there was a game played by one of the owners that owned two lots. So just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I look for a motion.
Julie, I guess not a question, a statement, which was to thank the residents who worked so hard to get it to this point too. So, you know, Jen did triple duty, the residents that were working on this were doing triple or quadruple duty to knock on doors and hold meetings and to do something as important as this. So thank you for doing it, and it's going to make a big difference for the residents. So this is step one of, we'll be talking about this again a couple more times.
Well, yeah, it's a lot of hard work, and the fact that you all worked together to move it along, that's great, and I hope it goes very smoothly.
That's it. I'm ready to help move it along and make a motion so that they can come back on January 8th.
Great. Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
And adopting the res, yes.
Support by trustee Kalinsky, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So we'll be sending out some notices of public hearing, and we'll see you back in January. So next, we have considering the approval of the 2024 MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation Annual Maintenance Permit. And tonight, we have Adam Roos with us, our Public Works Manager. And for those that weren't aware, Adam was promoted to this position about two months ago?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. So he is.
Congrats.
Our new Katie Fatherby.
Yeah, I spent roughly 18 years in the road division before I became the motor pool foreman, and then now Public Works Manager.
Yep. And your father was with us too. You're a.
Yep, 30 years.
Wow.
So I'm seeking board approval for the annual MDOT permit. Each year, MDOT requires any municipal jurisdiction that provides maintenance on state highways to receive a permit to do such work. We get this renewed every year. It allows us to perform maintenance like sewer main repair, sewer maintenance, street sweeping, litter control, turf maintenance, things like that.
Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
No? Then I look for a motion.
Motion.
Motion to.
Approve.
Approve and sign.
As presented by our Public Works Manager.
Great. Motion by trustee Kalinsky.
Support.
Support by clerk Brooke, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Are you going to let him get all of them easy like that, Noah? Man. Wow, he's really lobbing them off easy tonight. All right, so next, we have a considering approval of adopting, or sorry, consider where am I? Yes, another, another MDOT. I'm like, another? So consider approval adopting MDOT Form 2207B, the Performance Resolution Form for Municipalities to allow the police department to install Flock safety cameras on MDOT right-of-ways. We have Chief Gallagher. And in your presentation, if you can cover, I think there's some some misunderstanding of what is taken. There's no images of people, so.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, let me just, we'll get this done, and then I'll kind of clear up that information. So this permit is required as part of the Flock approval, which you approved over the summer. MDOT and Oakland County must approve permitting to install any Flock cameras because it's on their property. And then within their, I guess, domain of control, I guess I would say. So they require us to be added to basically the annual permit that Adam was talking about for any individual permit that requires us to be included on that form. Each division or department of the department must be on that form. So the police department was never on that form, but because these will be installed on the public right-of-ways, we have to be included. So that's what this form is asking, is for our approval and the township signature in doing so.
Do you have any questions? No? I look for a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Murray, support by trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? And can you just do a quick?
Yes, I just, just to make some clarification. First, license plates open to the general public are not protected under the Fourth Amendment. So, and we also agreed during the initial approval of Flock that any photographs taken are strictly of the license plate and the rear of the vehicle. That if it became more intrusive of photographing drivers or photographing any type of facial recognition, that we would bring that back into the board. We did clarify that with Flock at the time. They have no plans at this moment to make it that type of system. In addition to that, much different than us driving around just in our patrol cars, Flock is only photographing the vehicle. It's not getting any law enforcement information back. That's still on us to determine the right of whether we can run that license plate and determine ownership or occupants of the vehicle. That we have to do through our standard investigative techniques that we would do on a daily basis. I can tell you, just today, the city of Ferndale put out some information.
Just going to say that.
Reference and information. They just got Flock, and they were able to, actually, I don't know if there are Flocks installed yet, but Flock was able to help them solve a case where four individuals broke into a residence impersonating the police. And this was probably, we're probably pushing three, four months ago that this occurred. But based on this information, the investigative techniques they were able to use, Flock was able to solve that case. In addition, we all have been hearing about all our home invasions through the South American theft group. There was a case recently out of another state where Flock also played a crucial role in able to stop that car. Now, that vehicle, while we don't know if was involved in our home invasions in Bloomfield Township, we do know that vehicle was all over southeast Michigan during two of ours. And during that arrest, we were able to gather some great intel on how they operate at this time, and whether or not we can prove that they were committed any of ours is a whole other story. But, and this crew targets different sectors, I guess. They all have their own expertise of what they target, and the ledgers we found in there wouldn't indicate a different division of what they do. But again, having that availability really makes a difference. And so I just want to reassure that in the event something does come up with Flock where it does become more intrusive, because we're in full agreement that it should not, you know, there's a time and a place for that, we will bring it back to this board.
Thank you.
Yes. And I know it's not on the agenda, but is there any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
If you could just give us a little more information about the home invasions. I know there's been a lot of media coverage, and there's been a task force that's been assembled, so if you can talk about some of that.
Yeah, so obviously, if you watch the new, I'll back up a little bit for today. Today, Attorney Dana Nessel, our Attorney General Dana Nessel, and and other police chiefs in the Sheriff's Department held a press conference today for some arrests that were made back in February of a group of Chileans. It was a South American theft group that were arrested after committing home invasions down in Indiana, Carmel, Indiana, which is a very similar community. I have not been there, but I'm being told it's very similar to Bloomfield Township, a Birmingham area. So they were able to make some arrests, and during those arrests, we were able to, Oakland County Sheriff's Department and a I'll give them credit, Don Stevenson is a detective sergeant out in Oakland Township, really put a lot of work into it and identified, we worked with Carmel, did identify that that group of individuals that were arrested at that time did commit home invasions in Bloomfield Township, Bloomfield Hills, Rose Point, Oakland Township. I think there might have been a couple more municipalities. So they were able to take that to the Attorney General's office. They did charge them, and the warrants were sworn to today. I believe it was nine counts of home invasion, then the big one, which for us is the continuing criminal enterprise. So that group was taken off in February of this year. The South American theft group is believed to have made its way to Michigan probably in about 2021. It wasn't until we started to be able to gather a bunch of intel and speak with all our partners in the law enforcement community to realize that it was probably related to the South American theft group. And I don't, I want to make sure we don't just go out and say something's related to a group of individuals or a certain group without having some evidence or or something that points us in that direction. The method of operation, the arrests that have been made, things of that nature, all point to the South American theft group. So, you know, all of the video that we've obtained on the home invasions, that ours reappeared at the end of August, first weekend of September, is when they've happened. I think we're probably up to seven to 10 now. Are we, I think we're at seven now in Bloomfield Township over that timeframe. But across Metro Detroit, we're probably at 30 where we've connected and have much of the information that we need. So going back to that, to what we have been constantly in contact with our federal partners, our local partners, and every time one of these happens, you know, Detective Shoemaker, Detective Sergeant Shoemaker will tell you, my phone rings and immediately, it might be at 7:30 on a Friday night, we're all trying to figure out, you know, what's the next step on these? How are we going to protect the next homeowner from these individuals? What we determined was that a lot of us are, the same areas are getting hit. The Rose Points, the Oakland Townships, Bloomfield Township, Bloomfield Hills, primary, that were duplicating work. You know, we're really, one agency's doing one thing, and then another agency gets hit, and they're doing the same thing. So with the help of Sheriff Bouchard, we put together the task force. We held a meeting last Monday, a week ago today. 67 police officers, I think, showed up between chiefs, investigators, and command staffs. And then with that, about 33 agencies agreed to sign on to this task force. And now it's in a full-time task force. But when things happen, and just to give you an example, this weekend, when Thursday night, Bloomfield Hills got hit, one time for sure, we, there was a second one found to happen between Tuesday and Thursday, so we're assuming it probably, the method is on the weekend, so we're assuming it probably happened the same night. We were able to call on Troy Surveillance to start following up on some leads on Friday. We also called on, they were unable to come out, but we were able to call on to Waterford, their directed patrol unit, and other agencies in Shelby Township over the weekend, that if we needed their undercover units to come in and do things that that those resources were available to us. So it already, in my opinion, this weekend really helped, just in the communication aspect from where we're going on these. They're very frustrating. I met with a lot of the homeowners via Zoom on Thursday night of last week in our Section 24, the Brookdale area, and just talked with them and tried to reassure them that we're out there trying to do our best. But these are very sophisticated. They're using internet jammers, vehicle trackers, things of that nature that will take down if, a lot of our alarm systems now are Wi-Fi based. So watching them operate is, well, I want to say impressive. It's impressive because they do the research and they understand it. It's not impressive that they're hitting our homes, but they understand the law enforcement investigative techniques. So they're trying to always be a step ahead of us. So we were able to recover one vehicle from a home invasion last Saturday, so a week ago. And we're trying to gather some intel on that, but it's becoming difficult at times. So I'm open to any questions on it.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
I appreciate everything and keeping us informed.
Yeah, I'll keep pushing the emails as we learn more on it. So what we're hopefully, and there's been four crews arrested over the last. There was another crew arrested in Pennsylvania on yesterday, maybe yesterday or Saturday, I believe. Saturday? All, again, admitted to be South American theft group. Garden City arrested a crew that did pharmacy B and Es, I think it was. Jewelry store B and Es, and they admitted hitting along 94 from Chicago. So there's many facets of this group that we're trying to target and it's interesting, to say the least, and frustrating for our residents.
Well, and that criminal enterprise, that opens up a new chance that, that's a 20-year term.
Correct.
It's a lot different serving one or two years to protect your family and getting out versus 20 years. So hopefully people start talking.
Hundred percent. And it's lucrative, right? It's lucrative, so why not hit the same areas? So we're working on it, I promise that. And I'll keep you updated as much as we can and in our community. I mean, it's important. It's a top priority for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shu. All right. So next we have considering the designation of a bank's depository for tax collection, again presented by Michael Schostek.
Well, this is not nearly as interesting as what we just heard about and talked about, but is nonetheless required, as state law requires us to formally approve a banking institution to, for us, the treasury's office, to deposit the taxes that we've started collecting since December 1st. So I prepared a resolution here for the board to consider in the packet to go with JP Morgan Chase, which is the institution that we've been using for at least 10 years. We have excellent customer service from their teams, both here and in Chicago. And so I'm asking that the board authorize JP Morgan Chase to be the bank for tax deposits.
Anyone have any questions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
So next we have considering approval of a resolution to relocate precinct 2's polling location, presented by clerk Martin Brooke.
Okay, there are two items that relate to each other. They're both relocations of precincts. The item we're talking about right now is number 12 and the next is item 13. With regard to both of them, I wanted to make a quick background on them. You know, number one, you know, we do not want to move precincts for the upcoming 2024 election year, but facts arose that requires it. Now, with regard to each of these locations, you know, we looked at as many ideas as we could come up with, as to places to move them. We considered whether they're accessible and convenient to get to. They had the required parking spaces. They had the space interior that was sufficient and meets also the accessibility requirements for those individuals with disabilities. And first and foremost, that we found places that were willing to host us, which is harder and harder actually these days. So this is locate, this is precinct number two. And what's happened here is that last week, we received a phone call that the current precinct location, which has served as a precinct for many years, the St. Paul Methodist Church on East Square Lake was going to close. The congregation was merging with another church in Troy and the building is closed up for sale. It wasn't as though we could even use it in February because it was being essentially mothballed until it sold. So no heat and, you know, limited, no water kind of thing, limited heat and no water. We did find, though, immediately that St. George Greek Orthodox Church right around the corner on Woodward Avenue, you can see the other arrow pointing to it, also within precinct two. And their president of St. George, I mean, she couldn't have responded any faster to my sort of plea for help on this topic to host voters at their church and gave us an enthusiastic thumbs up to the, you know, to this. They really saw it as a great opportunity to serve their community. So we visited, of course, and reviewed the location, checked our, the handicap accessibility and parking and so forth. And I recommend it as the new permanent precinct voting, polling location for precinct two. And we expect that certainly won't be, it will not be changing throughout 2024.
Questions about that one?
So it sounds like a great recommendation, Martin. Thank you for finding that so quickly. But so will those residents all get notified with a new voter's registration card with that address since we have a big election coming up?
Yes, everybody is going to receive a voter registration card and a letter from my office explaining the location, showing a map and access information so that when they get there, they will know which door to go in. It's a big, it's a large facility with a lot of nice facilities for their parishioners.
Well, and there's usually great signs, you know, at the polling stations, but the notification by mail, that's great.
Yeah, you know, we did, we had to make a consolidation in September. And I did learn something through that, which was some voters wait to the very last minute. Like, you know, he was coming to the precinct at, you know, quarter to eight, it closes at eight. He had, he knew where it was, but was sure about which door. And I wish he'd come during the daylight because he would have seen the signs. So we're actually going to add another, just for that one individual who called and was, of course, not happy that didn't make it in time. But we're going to add some, not just, not only a map like this about where to go, but then what door, so that they can see that in advance. There'll be signs as well on site, but if it's dark, it can be hard. And this happens. I mean, people have a long day of work and they come sometimes at night and February will no doubt, no doubt be quite dark early.
Great. Thank you so much.
So.
Any other questions?
No, I'm not surprised that St. George is contributing their time and space. They've been great neighbors throughout the years that they've been there. They give a lot back to the community. So it's nice to hear and I'd be happy to make the motion.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So then on to your other location would be the resident who would relocate precinct 7's polling location.
Right. So we have a map for that one as well. And precinct seven is the same sort of situation. We do not want to move this precinct location, but we're required to because facts have arisen that demand it. Both of these pieces of information came to us within the last couple of weeks, by the way. And our deadline for this board to act to identify, to appoint a new polling location is the end of this month. So this meeting was the only meeting which we could do it. And I want to thank my team for quickly working on this and visiting locations and making calls and considering all the options. For precinct seven, it was recently moved to the IA because the school district said that would be a good place for it. We agreed. The school district now has said it's not a good place for a precinct and asked us to move. And however, they have offered the farm, Bowers School Farm Building, which is the main building next to the Bowers School. We also use the Farm Activity Building for another precinct, but they've offered that. It's, as you can see, it's just across the street from where they were at the IA. Arguably an improvement as far as the space and use, usage for the voters. That's one possibility. And so this one, what I'm asking the board is to appoint, is to approve two possible locations and delegate the final decision to the clerk, myself. The other location that is being considered is Beautiful Savior Church. It's at the corner of Westview and Adams. So it's just down the street from where the precinct had been at Eastover Elementary School, which we had to move from Eastover Elementary School because that school had been closed. It was under construction to host a new preschool program. But that's, it's a superior location. It's the access, the parking lot is spacious, the building is spacious. And it's wonderful that the pastor of the church is entertaining this idea and is going to bring it to his board next week. And if the board will have us, I will ultimately, you know, choose that site between the two. If the board will not have us for elections throughout 2024 at least, then we would use Bowers School Farm Building. And I'm asking the board to approve the proposed resolution, which will approve either location and then delegate the final decision to myself, which has to be before the end of this year.
Anyone have any questions? Not have a motion. They both sound like good choices and you seem to have a preference. So I hope that that board approves it, but definitely trust your judgment on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. And I make the motion that we approve. Motion by trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Next we have considering approval of the goose programs resolution for 24 through 28. Again, clerk Brooke.
So every few years, this comes to the board and according to legal requirements, a lake or lake community can have a goose program which relocates, which destroys nests and/or eggs and even relocates birds. They can achieve this by a petition process around their lake of owners or they can achieve that through the township board adopting a resolution permitting goose programs. We have been doing this in the township since, what was it, Tom, like?
1990s.
1990s, for a very long time. We did not just take the same resolution that's always existed since the 90s, but did review the current status of the DNR requirements and tweaked this very slightly for the new requirements and template after other communities that have recently adopted the same resolution. So this would allow a lake community to choose to, if they're, one of the lakes communities are listed here, to have a program to maintain or to manage their Canadian goose population on the lakes.
I mean, I don't think it says that they can shoot them. It's just the removal of eggs and such.
I, I.
It just says programs.
Right. This program could involve the goose that would not, would be, would be killed in this process, yes.
I think they said they would be rounding them up and in the process of rounding them up, they did, I did not read anything about shooting them.
That's why I just want to make sure there's not like random residents running around shooting geese.
No, they're not shooting, they would be rounded up and.
That they'd be rounded up.
They could be euthanized after that process.
By professionals. They're not rounded up by just some things on my front yard.
By professionals, goosebusters.
You sometimes have to set these parameters.
Yeah. There's an organization, one of the lakes actually hires one called Goosebusters, believe it or not. No, right, they do. And, but yes, they are rounded up. They may be euthanized, but.
But not by random residents.
Not by random residents who are not allowed to shoot or.
I'm glad to hear that.
Right. Well, with all the urban hunting we have going on around here lately.
Don't go, don't go. Don't go back there.
I wanted to ask to make sure people knew.
No, absolutely.
Make a motion.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by trustee Kalinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And next we have considering approval of the 2024 Board of Trustees' regular meeting schedule. Again, clerk Brooke.
Well, we meet every, we meet two Mondays a month, the second and fourth Monday of the month, unless noted otherwise. And in this instance, we are proposing to move the second February meeting from Election Day to the day after the election, which is a routine thing we do during presidential primaries, to move Wednesday, April 24th, which is Memorial, so it's not on Memorial Day, otherwise it would be Memorial Day. So it's.
That would be May.
May 24th.
I'm sorry, May 24th. Passover is the one I skipped over that. So yes, so April 24th is moved due to Passover and May is moved to one date due to Memorial Day. Then we, you might notice there was an absence of a second meeting in December. We routinely do not schedule a second meeting in December.
Isn't the February set on a Wednesday, did I see, that it actually moved two days, probably because of ZVA? I thought that's what I read.
Well, we don't do it on the Monday is the, sorry, Monday would be the meeting day. It's.
Tuesday's the election.
Tuesday's the election.
Okay, I knew there was a reason it went to Wednesday, not.
Maybe napping here on that day, but.
It was a long night.
But yeah, that helps. My team otherwise is completely occupied with, you know, making that happen.
Anyone have any questions, any comments? If not, a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Barnett. Support by clerk Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And we have considering approval of the Michigan Township Association's Principles of Governance for the Board of Trustees.
Okay, this item is included in the packet because we have, the board is of a slightly different composition with Mr. Kalinsky joining the board recently. Supervisor Walsh mentioned that, hey, we should probably update the chart on the wall, which is, he's absolutely right. We should. So this is a Principles of Township Governance Excellence document that has been routinely signed by the members of this board. We did review it to see that this is actually, this continues to be the current form that MTA suggests for Township Governance Pledge for the members of the board.
Maybe get you representing, so.
Do we need to approve this or?
We're asked to vote yes to approve it and then we can all sign it.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by treasurer Schostek. Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
This will be framed and put on the wall, by the way, outside.
Before we go to payroll and vouchers, only because we had the November 16th and 20th minutes approved and we did talk about lakes and geese roundup, just to notify the residents and note that if you had any further comment on any of the lake board meetings, then November 16th would have to be in by December 15th, which is Friday. And the November 20th written comments, you could still submit until December 20th. And then I believe they said it would be 30 days and we would hear back from the DNR.
With the, the only tweak I'd make to that was they didn't exactly, they didn't promise 30 days after that. So they're gonna, because there are so many lakes and so many other things, he's really thought maybe we should see at the end of February.
And the holidays and.
The holidays and all that, so.
Hopefully 30 days or so.
Or so, probably the end of February, but.
If he votes in our favor, he can have a five. Just as a follow-up, because we covered the minutes tonight and it's, we're days away from that deadline. If anybody had any further comments, there's the form that you can submit until the 15th or the 20th, depending on your lake.
And next we have approval of payroll and vouchers for December 11. Unless there's any changes, we have a motion by trustee Barnett. Support by trustee Murray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And our last motion?
I move adjourn.
Motion for adjourned by clerk Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you very much.